Good morning. It is nine o'clock. We will go ahead and call our meeting to order. There is a copy of the Open Meetings Act on the North Wall of the Legislative Chamber, and this meeting will be conducted in compliance with Nebraska's open meeting laws. Could we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will begin with the Douglas County Board of Equalization meeting. Good morning, Mr. Clerk. Could we please have the roll call?
Commissioner Borgeson, Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Craft, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Rogers, Commissioner Tusha.
Mr. Chairman.
Present. Thank you. Item A is approval of the minutes from last week's meeting, and item B is calling for December 13th as the date for hearing on certified assessment corrections.
Motion for V and B.
Questions or comments? Then could we please vote?
Motion passes.
Thank you. This is the opportunity for citizen comments. Would either of you sitting in the chamber like to make any comments concerning Board of Equalization? If not, we will move on to Resolution D and E approving corrections for errors and approving applications for tax exemptions on motor vehicles recommended by the county treasurer.
Motion for adjourned?
I have a motion and a second to approve Resolutions D, E, and adjourned.
Commissioner Boyle votes yes. Motion passes.
Thank you. Ironic that the guy who so likes to vote doesn't get to, in fact, vote often. While he's working with that, we will move on to the agenda for the Board of Commissioners meeting. Mr. Kavanaugh, could we please have the roll again?
Commissioner Borgeson, Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Craft, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Rogers, Commissioner Tusha.
Mr. Chairman.
Present. Thank you. Minutes and claims. Approval of minutes from last week's meeting and claims for payments through today's date.
Motion for V and B.
Questions or comments? Could we please vote?
Motion passes.
Thank you. Brings us to the consent agenda. We have five items on there, A through E.
Motion approved.
Second. Are there any items that anybody would like singled out for discussion? If not, Ellen, could we please vote on the consent agenda?
Motion passes.
Thank you. The next resolution is recognizing Douglas County employees for their participation in the food drive challenge coming from Commissioner Borgeson, who unfortunately is unable to be with us today. Anybody want to make any comments on this food drive?
I do.
Please do.
Our office was rigged. It was clear. I've had the election commissioner reweighing all the food that the men turned in.
Well, there was a men versus women competition in our office.
It's disputed.
[laughing]
No, it's not. Congratulations to the women.
Yes, the women seem to have outgiven the men, at least in our office, on this challenge, but a fun and important event that we--
Hand-packed a bunch of marshmallows for me to bring in, so that's all I can tell you.
So you answered both of them, didn't you?
I did.
Would anybody-- I think it would be appropriate to at least approve the resolution.
To approve.
Second.
Thank you.
And if we could, this was actually a two-state competition. The state of Nebraska versus state of Kansas, and we had an internal competition with different counties, then we had internal competitions within each county, and then within each department. And it was very well thought out and a very worthy cause to feed the hungry during this time of year. The problem is, we need to feed the hungry even when it's not holiday season. So I'd like to thank everybody who contributed. And thus, vote.
I think we ought to congratulate-- wasn't Diane Body Adams' office the top?
I believe so. Yes, yes, I see Phil nodding his head. So yes, the registered lead's office was the individual office with the highest giving. So, thank you, everyone, for participating in that.
My vote?
Yes. Shall we vote? Please, shall we? Thank you.
Motion passes.
Thank you. This brings us next to a public hearing for-- excuse me, citizens' comment. Thank you. Anybody wish to address the county board on any item not on the agenda? Then we will move on to the public hearing for liquor license for Maple Burgers LLC doing business as Fuddruckers Maple at 3636 North 156th Street in Omaha. Corporate manager application for Ron Pollan of Bennington. Is there anybody present? This is a public hearing, I am told, and Ellen, I think you perhaps know more of this than I do, but they're-- we do require applicants to submit to the county board an authorized sworn affidavit stating that the applicant has provided notice to adjoining property owners of the hearing, and we don't have that affidavit in this case. Is that--
It's my understanding that the affidavit has not been received by your office or by our office.
Okay.
The applicant did call the clerk's office and informed us they're on their way.
Are you with Fuddruckers?
Yes.
Fine. Are you Ron Pollan?
I am.
Do you have the affidavit?
I do.
Cool. You really are cutting this tight on time. I'll have you go, Ron. Would you, yeah, hand that to the clerk's office, please? Okay, good morning, Ron.
Good morning.
Welcome. We are in the middle of our public hearing concerning your liquor license. You do-- you did provide notice to all of the neighbors within 500 feet of the hearing?
Yes.
And you have provided a sworn affidavit to that?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And I did it within 10 days.
All right. Well--
And again, my apologies for being late. It was calculated this morning, so--
If you'd been about one minute later, it would have been too late, but you were here in the nick of time. Anybody-- Commissioner Boyle?
Mr. Chair, Mr. Pollan sent us an email Thursday on the first and said there's a 40-by-25-- 40-foot-by-25-foot enclosed patio for the operation that was not on the application drawing, and it has a four-foot fence around it, and it has an entrance and exit to the building, and he's asked that we add that to our liquor license application. So I just want that for the record. As far as I'm concerned, that sounds fine to me.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it.
So I'd make-- if you need a motion, I'd make a motion. I don't think you need one.
Well, we will, as soon as we conclude our public hearing here, so. Any other-- Commissioner Craft?
Yes, Mr. Clerk, does the paperwork look to be-- appear to be in order?
Yes, Commissioner.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else wishing to speak to this body at this public hearing? If not, we will close the public hearing, and what is the pleasure of the--
Move approval.
Second.
With the amendment--
With the amendment that you supplied.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are you clear on the motion, then, with the amendment and all? Okay, thank you. Further comments? Then could we please vote?
Motion passes.
You got it, Ron.
There you have it.
Wish you well.
Thank you so much for your patience. Have a terrific day.
Thank you.
You, too.
Budget report under the Finance Committee. Commissioner Craft, do you have--
The budget report is as presented. Commissioner Morgan and Borgeson and myself have been meeting with various people and entities. We're trying to get next-- even though we're seven months out for working on the budget, we're trying to get everything in order. We will be having our next meeting on the 13th, and we're going to be continuing the meetings in January. That'll probably be our last budget meeting for this year. But I hope we're getting the message across to all of the elected officials and all the departments that we have to find efficiencies, and with the Blue Ribbon Committee coming up, we need to sit tight and wait and see what they come up with and how we react to it. So, thank you, as presented.
Thank you, Commissioner Craft. This brings us, then, to Human Resources Committee. Commissioner Rogers?
It's a report.
All right.
And legislative issues, I guess, just want to note and remind everybody that-- All right, sorry. The report for number one is as presented. Item two, legislative issues, they are none that I know of, but I would like to remind everybody of next Monday's breakfast. And somebody can remind me where that's at.
It's at the U N O Thompson Alumni Center at 8:30 a.m.
And that's the breakfast that got rescheduled with the State Center. This is due to the special session, so if everybody can attend, we appreciate it. With that, item three, and that's the resolution approving pay increases for various Douglas County officials. And Mr. Chairman, this is as presented. I mean, I'd just like to personally ask if we can split the two up. And if that's not it, because just personally, I know where we're at, probably where that goes, but as I've stated in the past, my personal opinion is there's a certain amount of difference that I think we try to-- at times, we've always tried to give to the electeds, and the fact is, if there's, you know, a certain number that needs to be met, if they feel that-- if they understand that they need to stay within their budget, and this is what they're asking, I just personally, that's where I'm at, so I just personally like to ask for it to be separated.
What, if I may, Commissioner Rogers, what we have before us is setting salaries for the next four years for the public defender, the register of deeds, the clerk comptroller, and then for the next two years for the county commissioners.
And I'd just like--
Excuse me, not next two years. It's for 2013 and 2014 for the county commissioners.
Yeah, I just like those separated, ours separated from--
Take the county commissioners separate from the other elected officials. Well, I can tell you right now that I'm also going to want to set up-- separate out the public defender. I am not comfortable with the recommendation there and would like a separate discussion and vote on that one. So maybe we'd do best just to take these even one at a time.
I mean, I think, I mean, I don't know, I think there's unison on ours, you know, if we can take that, ours alone.
Okay. Start with the county commissioners?
Yeah.
Fine. Okay, then what we will be considering first is the salaries for the county commissioners for the years 2013 and 2014.
And I would move that as presented.
And as presented, a 0% adjustments for both of those two years.
I had my light on. I wanted to speak about number one.
Thank you, Commissioner Boyle.
Sorry.
I need a little talking.
I know. I didn't want to interrupt you.
The floor is yours, Commissioner Boyle.
Okay. On the weekly personnel report from civil service, there's a-- last week, when we had a kind of a loaded agenda, I didn't notice that there was a position posted on, I think, the 18th of November by the sheriff's office for CSI field supervisor, which the job description sounds like Mr. Kofod, who's-- was found guilty of tampering with evidence, and we've already-- they've already hired someone to run the shop, and it looks like there's another person that's being brought in, so that we're going to be spending much more money for the top two positions or something, and I asked if it was in the budget, and I got a one-word reply from the sheriff, said yes. So I suppose that means we made the mistake of approving his budget, and now he's apparently shifted money around to hire somebody additional in that. I, you know, the crime web is really a real sore issue with me. There is-- I can see no movement, no report at all on the merger, and it just seems to be something that most-- some people really want to go away. And so I object to that position, and I've tried to figure out how to remove it. I sent a bunch of emails out, and the only thing that can be done is for the sheriff to remove it, and so I am going to ask him to withdraw it because it is excessive, because there's already a person in that position. He should explain to us, you know, where this-- I know he runs his office, but this is not the way to, as far as I'm concerned, to watch the budget very well, if he's going to be adding someone that could be paid in excess of $70,000 at the starting pay. So the range is 50-something to 70, and nobody starts at the low. So I just wanted to register that, and I am going to pursue it and see what we can do, because it's-- it is excessive, in my opinion, and unnecessary, particularly with what we're facing. So, Mr. Craft, when we look at the budget for the sheriff's office, I'd like to see us go into the CSI budget and practically zero it out if this is the kind of cooperation we're going to get in from the sheriff.
We will definitely look at it, and we will be having open meetings on it.
Okay.
And I've definitely got some ideas--
Good.
--regarding how we can handle this and have it televised, and we can discuss that at--
Right. I just don't know how many employees we have involved in CSI Douglas County, CSI City of Omaha, and CSI State Patrol. I mean, pretty soon, you'll qualify to get a personalized license plate, because you have to have a minimum of 500 to get a personalized license plate like Griggin did. So anyway, it's out of control. So, thank you. I just wanted to get my comments in, and I intend to pursue it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Boyle. I apologize for--
Oh, that's okay.
Not putting that in the proper sequence. Which brings us back, then, to welcome Commissioner Morgan. We're up to setting salaries for elected officials, and we do have a motion on the floor. We're separating the elected officials. The first vote is going to be on county commissioners at 0-0 for 2013 and 2014, and that's the motion on the floor before us that we're about to vote on.
I'll second it.
Is there any comments to this particular motion? Okay, then, could we-- Ellen, please vote on the motion.
And this is for a 28% increase? No. No one's here. No one's here.
Zero and zero.
And Mr. Chair, I yield to you on how you want to approach the others. Like I said, I think, however we go about it, I do have some recommendations, anybody in the rest of the-- I think I know where it's going, but just personally, I think we've always tried to show some-- a little bit of autonomy to the electeds, and with respect to what we gave a couple of years ago, my idea is just trying to be fair to that, and the electeds will understand if they get this, they'll be constrained to what this does to their budget, and, you know, it's on them to deal with it. So that's my rationale. You can proceed, however you feel fit.
Thank you. I thank you for your input, Commissioner Rogers.
Commissioner Morgan, do you wish to vote?
Oh. Do you wish to vote on the last motion?
Yes.
A yes is 0% raises for the category.
The raises for the elected commissioners, okay, or elected officers, excuse me. We pursue this office. We accept the pay that it is and where it's at. If we're in it for the money, we're in it for the wrong reason. I am going to vote against any increase for four years for the elected officers, with one exception that Commissioner Morgan is going to talk about, I believe, and I'll yield the floor to him if he's ready to talk about it.
Commissioner Morgan?
What I suggested, I think, some time ago, the county board, in their wisdom judgment, felt that the public defender, county attorney should be the same. If we were to do, as Commissioner Craft said, which I agree with, and hold the line and not vote for any increases, then we'd start to have a difference in their pay. I would like to suggest that we go ahead with the 1% for the public defender the next two years to keep them the same. I've talked to some other people that have served in those capacities and feel that it is the right thing to do to keep their salaries the same, and I'd like to maybe just deal with the public defender, that he would receive the 1% next year and the 1% that other year, so that--
But no, we're setting it for four years, so you're saying--
And then it would be 0-0 after that.
So you're suggesting 1-1-0-0?
Correct. For just the public defender is what we discussed as a Finance Committee, Commissioner Craft and myself.
Okay. Thank you.
And if-- sorry, Commander. If the motion passes and is 1-1-0-0, and if the other motion passes that I'm voting against, which is 0-0-1-1, I do have a question as to how to-- that will affect things in the future. That's-- I'm done.
That equalize?
Fairly close.
I know there's other commissioners who want to talk, but I'd like Mr. Bloomingdale to be able to participate in this conversation as well. He's got some information. Patrick?
So in 2009, when you set the salaries for the county attorney, for 2013, you set it at 158, 154, and in 2014, you'd set it at 162, 899. So the difference is, in the current salary, or in the current resolution you propose for 2013, for the public defender to set at 153, 548. So to keep it equalized, if that's your intent, it would be 3% for 2013. Instead of 153, 548, it would be 158, 154, 158,154. And then in 2014, it would be 3% as well. It would be up to 160, 2,899. So it would be 3% each year for the first two years to keep it equalized with the county attorney for 13 and 14.
Thank you, Patrick. Commissioner Boyle?
Well, what I voted on last week with the 0% for the people making $100,000 was very difficult for me because they're performing very well. And it's very difficult for me with the elected officials that we're talking about, you know, and particularly, well, not particularly, I like all three of these folks up, I think, in a sense that I think they're really doing a good job. So Tom Riley is a standout as a public defender, and I was on a committee with Tom at the Bar Association, and I saw him in Lincoln, and I told him, I said, "I'm really sorry about the-- what's coming down on the salary." And he said, you know what he told me? He says, "I'm more worried about my employees," which didn't surprise me, I guess, but it did, and it really kind of stabbed me in the heart, because that's, you know, makes it more difficult. But I think, and also, you know, I-- well, I'll just stick with that office for right now, but I am going to be voting for a 0 for the public defender's office. I think that when times get better, we should be able to make that up. I-- it's not anything that I'm happy about at all, but I think it's required. There's just too many things going on in the community that we can-- and I understand it's not even a lot of-- not that much money. It's a few, you know, a few thousand dollars, but it all starts to add up. So I'm through with taking the time on this, but I am not going to be supporting the increase, even the 0-0-1-1. I'll be-- I'm going to be voting against that.
Thank you, Commissioner Boyle.
Could I ask Commissioner Boyle a question, if you don't mind?
Sure.
As far as trying to keep them together, and I'm respectful of your judgment as an attorney, that was-- I'm going to be voting the same way, the 0-0 on all of these. The only thing I was trying to do is keep the public defender and the county attorney doing some of the same work in a different capacity, but representing some of the same people. I was trying to keep it the same. You feel-- I hate to see us get that gap again, and then you have that big 6% or 7% increase. That's all I was-- we were suggesting.
Kathleen McAllister made a motion several years ago to raise the public defender's salary to be identical to the county attorney, and she talked about it, and I said at this forum, I said, "Well, if you feel that way, make a motion," and she did, and I seconded it. So I'm a very strong proponent of that equal pay, because the work that the public defender's office is extremely important. Well, so is the county attorney. And so I have-- I strongly support it, but I think in light of economic conditions, I can't support it.
Okay. Thank you, Mark.
So the resolution before us is for 0-0-1-1. Commissioner Morgan has suggested 1-1-0-0.
For public defender.
Public defender only for the next four years is what we're talking about, and the numbers I'm referring to are how much of a raise would occur in each of those four years to stay equal with the county attorney, which has been an objective of this board for many years now. According to Mr. Bloomingdale, would take 3% raise year one, 3% raise year two, and then presumably 0-0 after that. So we have a variety of ideas floating around here. Now we need to find out where the majority of the board is, where they're thinking. Commissioner Rogers?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, just two things, and I want to preface it because I understand where Commissioner Craft's comment was coming from, but I don't want to even continue this thought going through the public's mind that because you're elected, you know, it's just full of out service, you know? Service doesn't alleviate competence, and I think there's a certain amount of pay that's required. Now, we don't-- definitely don't break the bank, and we're below a lot of our peers, so, I mean, I just want to put that on record that, yeah, you serve, but, you know, it's just not like you should not be paid a comparable fee. And I understand exactly where you're coming from. I just don't like to feed that beast that you should be getting paid lower than you should. And second, you know, if we're going to bite this apple of, you know, playing with the public defender's salary, you know, yeah, you know, there's a distinction in the lawyers to some degree, but, you know, I just don't think you can play this game with the rest of the role officers. I mean, pulling one out and then leaving the rest there, I mean, either you're going to go all in or not at all, and it's the question we were talking last week about, the fairness piece. I mean, we already set the precedence two years ago when we gave others the salary increases, and then the budget, we went zero, and we didn't cut anything. So, like I said, I'm more than willing to put mine at zero, but I think, and we control our own budgets, and if we're going to-- and if we give them the increase, I think they should know well aware that, you know, they'll get this, and they need to handle everything within their budget, meaning their own employees and everything accordingly. And I think we still control the flat line of that, so I just want to put that on record.
Thank you. I believe we have a motion on the floor. We think--
Mr. Chair, if it could be restated for clarity purposes, and the second.
The motion would be that for the public defender, for 2013 and 14, we would give the 1% raise and then 0-0.
Thank you.
Would be the motion. Correct, Mark. Could you second that?
Well, in light of where this is heading, let me comment that I'll be supporting the motion. I support trying to keep them equalized. I would support a motion to give 3% raises for the first two years to the public defender, just to keep the salaries equal with the county attorney. But I can tell that isn't going to go anywhere, and politics is the art of compromise. I will come on board with the 1-1-0-0 as probably the best compromise that I see looming out here. So with that, unless anybody has any further comments, could we please vote? Now, this is only for the public defender.
Motion fails.
Okay. Well, somebody have another idea of something to vote on, then? This is going to be interesting. This is going to be interesting.
I would think what we do at this point then is take up all those officials and make a motion basically to hold, yeah, to hold the line and go with 0000.
Second?
Well, the resolution in, in the Board that we started with was 0011. Correct. That is correct, but that's not what he is proposing at this point. So what we have now is 0000.
Correct.
Is that right? And we do have a second?
Yes.
Commissioner Craft? All right. Commissioner Tisha?
May I ask what, what we're voting on? The Public Defender, Register of Deeds, and Clerk Comptroller for the 0000?
That'd be correct.
Okay, so the motion then is for all three elected officials?
Yes.
Okay. Register of Deeds and Clerk Comptroller as well. Okay, well, I will, on this one, be voting no and fall back to the resolution that we started with at 0011. That's where I'll end up casting my vote if we get that far. But the motion before us then is to freeze the salaries for four years of these three offices. If there's no further questions or comments, could we please vote?
Yes is for the 0000.
Correct.
Motion fails.
You know, there's a good reason we have an odd number of people on this Board as a rule.
We are odd.
We are odd, even if there's a six of us, but... Okay, so we have yet to find consensus. Let me throw out for consideration in the form of a motion, the resolution that we started the day with of 0011 as the next four years for all three of these offices under consideration. So I would make that motion.
Second?
And I have a question.
Commissioner Craft?
My sense is this is going to fail on a 3-3 vote again. Is there a time constraint that this has to be decided today?
No, it doesn't have to be decided, it'll have to be decided next week, though.
Okay. Is it, is, are there procedural issues we have to deal with if this fails today? Do we have to rewrite the proposal in a different way? Who brings it back?
I think that'd be the end of it.
Or if it fails today, is that the end of it?
I think that would be the end of it.
And, I mean, is it when people...
Yeah, anybody could bring it back if it's the title.
Okay. Because my sense is it's going to fail. Something just kind of...
Commissioner Rogers? Leftover? All right. Okay, then the motion before us is for 0011% raises for the, for the next four years for these three offices. Could we please vote?
Motion fails.
Okay. At that point, I would suggest we move on.
That's a good idea.
And leave this issue. I'm glad that we have one more week to have further discussions, and maybe we'll even have seven Commissioners here next week to vote, which would help. So with that, I will, I will call that item an abject failure on our part, and we will... Oh, there's nothing to move on to. That was it. The 108 thing we had, and I lost it all. We do have, let me just note, make note before we adjourn, there's a Child and Youth Services Committee at 1 o'clock today up in Room 903, Commissioner Rogers. We have, we, the County Board, have one more meeting next week, and then we will adjourn for the season until January 10th of next year, when we will have our first meeting of the new year. There is no need for executive session, and life is good. So with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second?
Could we please vote? What I really like to say...
Tie vote.
Yeah, we'll tie on that. What I'd like to say is all in favor signify by leaving; those opposed can stay.
Motion passes.
Thank you, buddy.
Good. We could agree on something.